I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everyone, welcome to tonight's meeting. We're going to start off with our favorite thing, Student of the Month, and I think we're going to do February 1st.
We'll start off with Hornet Park, Mrs. Probus.
Well, good evening everyone, I'm Erin Probus, the principal at Hornet Park Elementary School, and it's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, and a happy belated Easter, and welcome back from spring break. Just a couple of things, I'll keep the school update kind of brief this evening so we can celebrate our students, but as you know, the saying is that April showers bring May flowers, and so at Hornet Park, we're really taking this long month of April and the long month of May to really shower our students with the tools they need to be successful to wrap up this school year. Not only do we hope to shower them with authentic and engaging learning experiences, but also with love support and then a smidgen of fun as well. So, some things that we have been doing to shower our students with these things also have involved our families. And so, one thing I wanted to update you to this evening on is how we're doing with Accelerated Reader and Reading Railroad. Those are two programs that we use to encourage independent reading among students or reading with their families at home. And so, students can earn a certain level and they receive a certificate, but I want to refer with you this evening about a higher level of achievement. Students can also earn a lunch with me, or a lunch with their teacher, or extra recess with me. And so, those are kind of like the higher achieving AR Reading Railroad students, and I wanted to let you know, I have been able to recognize 199 students at Hornet Park who are beginning readers as of before spring break. And so, I think that's a huge accomplishment when we're coming in, beginning readers, and we're here at the end of the year, we've been able to recognize at those higher levels nearly 200 kiddos. So, a pat on the back to not only our students and their hard work and their teachers, but our families that are spending time each evening reading together, and then also to Betty Collins, who volunteers nearly daily each week, and the students can go and spend time with her testing and reading as well. So, that's one example of how we're working together with families to shower those blessings on our students. And then, also, some fun things we have going on this month. April 19th is going to be a PJ Day, April 26th will be Hat Day, and those both, the proceeds go to Riley Children's Hospital. And then, Mr. Buckler and I talked, and he gets to talk about the Spring Carnival, so be on the edge seat about what else is, April 26th. So, we want to encourage not only each classroom and each student, but each family to really have a final push through these last few weeks of school. We don't have a break for a while, so let's really plug along to try and focus to meet our school goal, which is all about phonemic awareness and reading by the end of the school year. Okay, you know, I could talk forever, so I won't, but I will go ahead and begin recognizing our first Student of the Month. As you know, we'll be doing two this evening, and so I'd like to begin with our February Student of the Month, Bryn Barnett. Bryn, would you please come up? Some wonderful things her teachers have had to say about Bryn. Mrs. Boss, her teacher is here this evening, so thank you, Mrs. Boss, says, "I have felt so fortunate to have had Bryn in my class for the past two years. Bryn is a sweet, wonderful young lady. She's kind, helpful, and is an amazing role model. She has a way of assisting and guiding other students without coming across as bossy or pushy. She always has a positive attitude striving to do her best in everything. Bryn is always up to a challenge. She especially loves to write and illustrate books," and I read one about cats just recently. "She recently wrote a well-organized chapter book to share with the class. It's also been a pleasure to work with Bryn's family," who was like an entire row here this evening. "It is obvious that Bryn has had a loving support from many family members." Also, from Mrs. Etter, she says, "Bryn always does the right thing without being asked. She sets a good example when others sometimes struggle to do the right thing. She's wonderful to have around, making her successful in completing her tasks." And finally, Mrs. McDivitt, there's more on here, but I have to cut it short. "Bryn is so sweet, she's very responsible, respectful, and kind to her peers. She is such an excellent role model. I have enjoyed having her several times for success and in and out of the classroom this year." Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to present Bryn Barnett. All right, it's my pleasure to go ahead and introduce our next Student of the Month. Our March Student of the Month is Adrian Carlisle. Adrian, would you please come up and join me? Ms. Coons has to say this about sweet Adrian. He is so sweet, whenever I see him, he's always doing the right thing, following directions, and trying his best to be a very good example. I have also never even heard one tattle about him from another student, which at Hornet Park is amazing. He always treats everyone very sweetly, and he's a good one to be our Student of the Month for Hornet Park. Mrs. Sutton says, "I absolutely love," all caps, "Abraham, and feel so blessed to be a part of his school journey. He's polite, gentle, and always tries any challenge. He's kind, happy, and just all around a pleasure to work with." Work with, excuse me. Mrs. Bennett says, "Abraham joined our class in the middle of this year, and he's been so very cooperative and kind to all the other students. He's a hard worker, he tries his best all the time, he is prepared each day, and he's ready to start his work." And then, I'll wrap up here with Ms. Weeshawn. Says, "I absolutely love having Abraham in class. He is such a sweet little boy, very respectful, responsible, and helping others in class. Anytime he sees a neighbor needing help, he offers his assistance without my asking, and he does it in a very nice way. He is a great worker, and he's always doing the right thing." Ladies and gentlemen, my pleasure to represent and for Hornet Park, Adrian Carlisle.
Central Elementary School, Mr. Buckler.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to give a quick update of some things that are going on at Central. Spring is a busy testing time, especially for the third graders. We've already done the Applied Skills portion of I-Step, and we've taken I-Read, that Mr. Collins will be talking about later on in the meeting. The week of the 29th will be the second part of I-Step, and that's the multiple choice section. And then, the week after that, we'll start testing in WEA with the second graders probably to give the third graders a break, and then they'll test that next week. So, that's coming up before the next board meeting, so I wanted everyone to be prepared. Mrs. Probus already mentioned, our Spring Carnival is Friday, the 26th, it's at Hornet Park, it's for both schools. We're looking for volunteers, first and foremost, we want people to come, but we're going to need a lot of volunteers to get that to be successful. So, if you would like to volunteer, call Central and ask to speak to Mrs. Commodore, and she'll be able to hook you up with that. Also, our third annual Book Nick at Sarah Bolton Park is the 9th of May, which is again a little bit far off, but I want to give people a chance to get that on their calendar. This year, we're adding a program by the third graders. The new music teacher, Mrs. Etter, is working with the third grade students, and so they'll do their spring program at the Book Nick. Due to the construction and lack of parking, Mr. Gerhart at the middle school has opened up his parking lot for us, and so we'll have a shovel that will go back and forth from the park to the middle school so that we can have plenty of parking for everyone. So, those are just some exciting things that are coming up at Central. I'm going to have Madeline Schwartz come up first. She is our February Student of the Month. Madeline is a third grader in Mr. Collins' class. Mr. Collins states that Madeline is a hard worker that does her personal best in the classroom. Mrs. Sutton, our teacher, praises Madeline as a wonderful student who is always respectful of others and a bright spot in her day. She's a very creative, enthusiastic learner who always puts her heart, soul, and voice into everything that she creates. Mrs. Etter, the music teacher, states that Madeline does a great job during music class. She is always polite and follows directions. She sets a good example for the other students and doesn't have to be reminded to do the right thing. Finally, Mrs. Weeshawn, our High Technology teacher, reports that she absolutely loves having Madeline in class. She has always been very kind. Madeline is quiet but always does the right thing, and it shows in her work. She is very successful in all of her technology projects. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Madeline Schwartz, our February Student.
Our March Student of the Month is Ava Fritch. Come on up, Ava. Ava is a second grader in Mr. Sutton's class, and Mr. Sutton is here this evening. He states that Ava is an old soul whose kindness and caring is beyond her years. She is a hard worker and a great role model to others. Ava will be able to accomplish anything she puts her mind to. She will be one of those people who will make a notable difference in the world once she is done with her education. In Applied Technology, Mrs. Weeshawn says Ava is very sweet, well-mannered little girl and brightens up her day. She is a role model in class and is always modeling the right behavior. Ava is always willing to help classmates, and she does a wonderful job with her computer skills. In Music, Mrs. Etter sees a sweet, smart, helpful, and respectful girl. Mr. Hubbell, a teacher on Ava's team, reports Ava is an extremely caring and a hard worker. She is a model student. Ava is always putting others before herself. She is an excellent student who is constantly giving maximum effort. Finally, Mrs. Sutton praises that Ava provides her with a hug, a smile, and a good morning each day. She is extremely polite, kind to others, willing to tackle any challenge, compassionate to others, and a very considerate girl. She is a born leader and is a great example of some of the best kids around. I am pleased to present Ava Fritch, our March Student of the Month. I want to take just one other minute to point out that my brother, Jackson, is in third grade, and Cooper is in second grade as well, and they have been Students of Month at Central. They just weren't chosen to come here, so all of the Fritch kids at Central have been recognized as Students of the Month at some time during the year.
Good evening. Just to inform you of a couple of upcoming events and highlights from the last month, our Spring Louls coming up, that will be Thursday, April 18th this year. We also have a field trip to Chicago on the 19th with a busload of middle school students. It's a wonderful opportunity for them to be exposed to some big city things up there in Chicago. As Mr. Buckler indicated, we have I-Step Plus coming up beginning on 4/29, and this year we're going to have all 460 of our students do the online version, so that will be a challenge for us, and we encourage everyone to do those things that we know help, which is get a good night's rest, eat breakfast in the morning. And by the way, Beach Grove Middle School has universal free breakfast, so if you can't eat at home, you can come to school and eat. Want to congratulate Devin Hunter. I told you last time that he has won our school-wide spelling feed the last two years. He went on and placed in the top 10 in regionals at IUPUI last month, so congratulations to him. We had 151 students on the A&amp;B honor roll for our third nine weeks. And the final highlight is that we have 70-plus track participants this year, and just to kind of add to what Mr. Buckler indicated, if you're coming to the track meet, our track parking is quite limited with Main Street being closed, so for Beach Grove patrons, if you would park in our parking lot and walk down, that would preabsent space for our visitors. And now for, well, I guess, our first Student of the Month, Zach Brigham, is playing baseball right now, so he's not here. I've invited him to come back at the May Board meeting, and we'll honor him then. Our second Student of the Month is Tiffany Allenberg. If you'd come up, please. Mr. Ott is representing Team Einstein tonight, and this is what Team Einstein has to say. Team Einstein selects Tiffany Allenberg as its Student of the Month. Tiffany has distinguished herself so far this year as a model student in our learning community. She has an exceptional work ethic and is dedicated to living and embodying the school's core values. Tiffany is highly respected by Beach Grove Middle School teachers and students because of her kind personality and courtesy toward others. Tiffany pays careful attention in class, is always on task, and seeks help when she needs it. She then uses this knowledge to raise the level of achievement of those students around her. She never fails to respect herself, her classmates, and her teachers. Tiffany is a great young lady, a wonderful student, and Team Einstein's a Student of the Month. Congratulations.
We would like to recognize two students. They sort of come as a partnership tonight, representative of one of our project-based activities, so if I could have Michelle Chapman and Donald Tolbert come up. We would like to recognize them for their efforts in developing our snack shop at the HEA. We're very pleased to recognize both Michelle and Donald as our February and March Student of the Month. Since February, they developed our HEA snack shop, and they manage that every day. Donald is the son of Larry and Laura Tolbert and is a junior at the Hornet and Richmond Academy. Donald is a full-time student and attends one block at the high school. Donald has a keen interest in technology, and after high school, he plans to study computer programming and ITT. Michelle is the daughter of Clint Chapman and is a junior at the HEA. She is also a full-time student and is a Hornet Park bus monitor every afternoon. Michelle is interested in attending Benson University and would like to pursue a career in psychology. In February, Donald and Michelle worked together in the development of our snack shop. With the help of Mrs. Condon and Mr. Starks, Donald and Michelle created a spreadsheet to track and record inventory, manage sales, and monitor profit. Each day, they count and record product, in the afternoon, monitor sales throughout the day, and determine their profit. With the profit they have earned thus far, they have purchased a refrigerator for the snack shop. As a result, they have learned several lessons in managing a business. Donald stated to me today, "I understand the idea of loss in business when we cannot account for product. I understand that product count is important in managing a business, maintaining a profit." Michelle stated, "Business owners must be accountable for their mistakes and must be very accurate." Michelle also stated that business partners must learn to work together and communicate. Communication is important in a business partnership. We often hear them communicating in the back room as they're counting product. And I think both would agree that communication has been a key to their success in business. Mrs. Condon commented today that she has recognized much personal growth in both students as they have embraced the challenges and successes of business management. We congratulate both of these students for their efforts at the HEA, and we look forward to their continued success in the future.
Good evening. Just a couple things I want to touch base with before we do some presentations and recognitions. Tomorrow's our big NIET visit at high school, and that's the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching. They're going to be coming and evaluating Tapp High School, so we're looking forward to that, and it's going to be a fun day. And our spring sports are kicked off. We have things going on all over with softball, bat baseball, tracks going on tonight, girls' tennis. Molly, who's one of the Students of the Month, won her tennis match. That's the thing I told her before, before coming, I said, "You have to play longer to win, do that." She won, she's here tonight as well. And then, we also have boys' golf kicked off and going on well, so we have a lot of activities for our students going on. I'd like to start by introducing and recognizing our faculty Student of the Month, and that was Jimmy Johnson this year, or this month. Mr. Johnson teaches CAD and Communication Processing at the high school. He's also our SDS Specialist at the high school as well. He spends a lot of time with students facilitating and coaching them on Beach Leaf, which is our newspaper, as well as our student yearbook. He works very diligent in what he does, he puts a lot of extra time in, so we're very proud of Jimmy Johnson. At C-9, we had three Student of the Months this month for the month of April. One of them was Jessie Harbaugh. She was in Biomedical Science. Jessie's always respectful and diligent. He shows determination and perseverance when it comes to his biomedical labs, activities and research, and that's from Mrs. King, his teacher. Mr. Bonner is Kodiak McBrary's drafting and CAD teacher as well, and Kodiak's going to represent Beach Grove High School in the drafting CAD program at the Regional Skills Competition, which is a USA competition, and championship, which is coming up soon, and he's going to make, or at least Kodiak's going to make auto CAD part of his life. That's what he wants to pursue as a career. And then, Trayvon Sevion in veterinary assisting. Mrs. Smith says that Trayvon works very hard and is determined with everything he does. He is always motivated to do his best, and he always encourages his peers to get the best out of them as well. So, we had three students at the C-9 we wanted to recognize, too. Very proud of all three of those students. First, tonight, we want to recognize Molly Wolf. Come on up, Molly. Molly's a junior. I'm Tommy Dawson. Beth Wolf, Beth is a teacher here at the high school. Molly's GPA is 4.0, she ranks eighth out of her class of 181. She's in everything. Who's your girl state representative for us? She's the Student Council President, a Hornet mentor, cheerleading squad, Spell Bowl, Spanish Club, Spanish Honor Society, tennis, and School Community Council. So, she's got a full plate. Service projects that she's involved in, she's been involved with Peyton Manning Children's Hospital, the Richard Luger Symposium, the Spirit of Sports Participant, and the Mary's Union Council as well. As a Student Council President, she's been very instrumental in putting together various charitable activities for us this year at the high school. Under her direction, our Student Council has been involved with making cheese balls with one of the sororities, participated in Brian's trike race for the visually impaired. She's part of the recycling program throughout the building, and she's working on the canned food drive and also the winter coat drive this year. So, she's been really busy on helping Beach Grove be very involved with community service. Her future plans are go to Purdue University, good school, and work, major in elementary education as well. Mrs. Higgins, one of her teachers, has for art, and she says, "Molly's in my art appreciation class and shows remarkable skill and deep, higher-level thinking with the ability to articulate her thoughts in words and writing. She never misses school and always has her assignment completed to the best of her ability and on time. I am not only proud of her achievements and her work ethic, but she is mature beyond her years, sweet nature and a nice young woman." Molly Wolf. And our second Student of the Month is Tommy Pick. Come on up, Tommy. Mark and Anisa Gates. He has a GPA of 4.19 right now, she's second in the class of 219. He's very involved, too. He spends a lot of time, 12 months a year, playing basketball. He's in a Renaissance Committee which helps select the Hall of Fame representatives out in our hallway in the front office, Spanish Club, and also the Spanish Honor Society. But what's not written down here, he also works here at Beach Grove High School for Mr. Clebinger. Anytime we have some type of event that comes up, Mr. Clebinger hires Tommy and some other students to come and work it, as well as our athletic events as well. His future plans, he's leaning on going back to Purdue, another Purdue person, and majoring in the field of science. He's really caught the bug of science, and he's very, very smart in that area, so we're very proud of Tommy. Mrs. Dawson said that he's diligent and hard-working student and athlete, always prepared for class with a very positive attitude. I have him in his inner speech class this year, and he had her in honors English last year. And he does it, he always tries to take the hardest classes because he wants to be the best he can possibly be. And so, again, we're very proud to introduce you, Tommy Pick.
Good evening. Mine's going to be short and sweet. Both of my Students of the Month are not here, running in the middle school track meet, so next month I will get to introduce three students, but it was their first track meet, and I could say the school board meeting is more important than the track meet, especially with the weather outside. So, but I do have a couple of things that I want to update you on South Grove, actually some accolades for some of my teachers. In March, we went to the Tapp National Conference, the administrators and master teachers and some of the mentor teachers, and this is the Tapp National Magazine that everybody at that conference was given. And on page 14 is our very own DeeDee Horn, who is the master teacher at South Grove Intermediate School. DeeDee was interviewed for this article on using the portal for Tapp to help teachers, and when they called her, she didn't really like the angle of the story that they wanted her to go, so she pitched another idea, and they went with that. So, it even says DeeDee Horn's tips for getting career teachers started. So, kind of interesting and exciting that one of our own teachers here from Beach Grove was published in a national magazine on making teachers better. So, congratulations to her. And then, the other accolade that I wanted to give a shout out tonight was to Judy Clifane. Judy Clifane is South Grove's Science and Technology teacher. She just received a $50 STEM grant from the Tech Point Foundation for Youth. Her project was entitled Toy Time and was one of only 17 chosen. So, Judy's class is new at South Grove this year. It incorporates technology and science, which we all know is the push for the future, and it's innovative in the sense that it does combine those two together. Students are engaged in daily learning about science using technology as the medium. And thanks to Judy, she has developed, masterminded this whole curriculum on her own, so we're very proud of that addition because it feeds right into what they're going to do at the middle school and then off with the high school with science and technology. So, very proud of her as well. And that's all that I have, and next month I will introduce three Students of the Month from South Grove. Thank you. That concludes tonight's meeting for the Student of the Month. Rick Skirvin would like to talk to you about something before you leave, and then you're either welcome to stay for the business portion, or you're free to leave.
I would just like to recognize two teachers that we have that are retiring this year. Between them, they have a combined 73 years of teaching experience, and one of them is Miss Boss. And the other is a bit, a little personal for me because he was my teacher. He helped me find my, you wouldn't be able to tell now, he'll help me find my inner running nerd 25-plus years ago, and that's Mr. Ott. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Collins, would you like to start with the curriculum and Tapp update, please?
Sure. What I like to do is keep you informed if someone asks you a question or that you might at least know a little bit about what's going on. So, that's some of the topics that we've done recently I wanted to share with you. First of all, I-Step's done in two pieces. The first one was the Applied Skill, which is the writing. We did that paper and pencil, it's been turned in. The next part is the multiple choice, and this year, we're going to do it all online. Last year, we just had certain grades that we did it, but this year, it'll be everybody. So, the tech people do a wonderful job of making sure that everyone's doing the right thing, but that'll be a little different, and we put the dates here so you know when that part will be done. The other thing that's kind of confusing is, is the high school also gives a I-Step, but it's by a different company, and it's called a little different. So, if you hear ECA, that's End Course Assessments, that's equivalent to I-Step at the high school, different company. The ones that really count as far as accreditation is the English 10 and the Algebra 1. They also give a science test along the way, but that doesn't count according to that. So, if you hear anything about that, this, the ECA is the high school version of I-Step. I-Read was a law that was passed last year where every student has to pass that to go to the fourth grade, so we just got finished with that. We did it all online this time. Last year, we did a paper and pencil one, just did the summer online, but it was so successful during the summer that we did it all online, got our results back right away. We had, to start with, 83.7% of the kids passed the first time around. Then, we have to take out the kids who have waivers. Those are the kids with their parent and a special education teacher have come to an agreement that since they have an individualized program, they'll be going on because the reading is at their level. Then, we will mediate the kids during the summer, we still haven't passed, and then from that, we'll get a final percentage. Usually, what we aim at is 90%. What we need is about five kids to pass, and we had a whole lot of kids that were one or two points away, so I, if they should... So I, if they're five kids, they'll reach that right away. So I think we will reach our goal with 90%. That's my guess on the whole thing. Next thing is we apply for the Q&amp;A Grant. This is the state's grant that has a testing procedure that we can do throughout the year in grades, in the I-Step grades, to tell them whether they're gonna pass the I-Step or not. Does not cost us anything and we do it, we have to have at least 90% of our kids to participate. So usually by the end of the year, you know pretty much which ones probably are gonna pass and which ones probably will not. But that is something we've applied for and received each year. The other thing I thought was interesting that you might know with the, things that are going on in the federal government, we've been told that if things continue the way it is, there'll probably be a 5% cut in the federal grants. We have two federal grants, Title I and Title II. So this kind of gets you an idea of what kind of cuts we might have back. Title I is remediation and then Title II is professional development. This is where we hire our TAP assistants to work with us. The last thing I wanted to mention, I wanted to make you aware of, we do have the national TAP people, which is the NIET people, come into each of our schools and evaluate our programs and give us advice. This is really wonderful to have someone from a national level come in and say, are you comparable or better or how are you doing national wise? And so each of our buildings are having these visits by the national people called the NIET, which is an organization that TAP hires to work with them. And in the past, we've had really good results and I don't expect anything but having wonderful results.
Well, tonight I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to highlight a really new program that I wasn't sure that you as a board sort of knew even happened. And I wanted to invite you to this very special event. On Friday, May the 3rd, our special education preschool, we have our special education preschool run by Ms. Kathy Weisenbach over at Hornet Park. They are participants with the other three member districts from Southside Special Services in a day of day line event called Special Olympics of Indiana's Young Athletes Day. This is an incredible program. We have our morning preschool kiddos, I guess I should say where it's taking place. This year, it's going to take place at Franklin Central High School at their football field. Again, it's on May 3rd. Last year, we were lucky enough to host this very special event. It rotates every year among our member districts. The morning preschool class has an opening ceremonies event. It is about the most priceless thing you've ever seen at 9:15. And then the afternoon preschool has their opening ceremony at 12:45. The boys and girls, and we're talking about three and four year olds, participate in athletic events that are of an Olympic nature all across the football stadium there at Franklin Central High School. Ms. Kathy has been accused of doping. You know, we always do very well in the competition, just kidding publicly. They, it is just truly one of my favorite days of our entire school here. The boys and girls clearly present with some special issues and they are able to overcome those issues in this framework. It is sponsored by Special Olympics of Indiana, so it's very rigorous as far as volunteer participation, training, and really it's just, it's just a highlight of the year. So if you have a moment and clearly if it doesn't work for you this year, you'll have the opportunity every year. If you just joined us for, you know, 30 minutes, it is one of those events that can really make an imprint on your heart. It's a beautiful thing. So we are grateful to Ms. Kathy for all the work that she does with the boys and girls to really get them ready. Dr. Keely and his family have been very active volunteer participants in the program and we're grateful for that. So just a true community event and something that you just walk away feeling really good about. So just wanted to let you know about that because sometimes those are things that you might not hear about. That's all I had for tonight. I just thought it'd be fun to highlight that special event.
Thank you. Valerie?
Yes. A couple of things. I had the Trail of Entertainment TAP Conference and several of our teachers and administrators presented during that conference. It was really wonderful. And of course, our own Hornet Park Elementary that was highlighted is one of the six showcase schools from across the nation. So that was a really wonderful thing. So I know they brought the banner back and that was a very cool thing to see. So I was glad to go there. Then we've had some great local coverage again. I don't know if you saw it during spring break for those of you who are gone, but our past high school principal Harvey Warner was featured as the cover story on Southside Times for Civil War Show that he brought to the high school, which benefits the Renaissance program. So it was a really neat story. So if you could look at that past copy, the end of March, make sure you pick it up because it's a neat story. This is the month for conferences for me. It seems like the National School Public Relations Association Conference is this month, which I'll be attending. And I'm also gonna be attending the, one for the Beachwood Education Foundation, which is a national school education foundation conference also. So I'll be gone about four days during this month just to attend those two conferences. So I'm excited about that. We had a Barnes and Noble Book Fair on March 17th and one of the highlights is that we also highlighted Brad Lamar was there from middle school and signed copies of his new book. And so we had proceeds from that. We did, I was there with some other volunteers and we did crafts that day for kids and some other things all afternoon on that Sunday afternoon. And because of doing all that, we raised $607.14 for the education foundation. So we're really happy that we were able to get that money, again, to help us support teacher grants and scholarships. So we're excited about that. Make sure you have in your calendar, May 8th for the district wide art show. That is coming up and you won't want to miss it. It's gonna, I know, be even better than ever. So it's a great thing. And TCU is going to some sponsor Getting Framed and Matted, the first place award. And they're doing a couple of other special things for our art teachers as they set up and take down. So I'm excited to partner with them this year. And then a special note, you probably saw it on here, but today's my one year anniversary with Beach Grove City Schools. Congratulations. And so I feel really privileged to be able to serve such a wonderful district and, you know, get to learn about even more than I even knew as a school board member. It's just been a real privilege to be able to work with all the administrators, teachers, staff. It's been an awesome experience, so I love that. And then I want to recognize two people. One that we'll do next month too, but you might notice our overhead door over here has been painted. Janaye Sutton, one of our teachers, and she had students come in during spring break and they painted that overhead door and they just did a fantastic job. So it's really neat. I came in here a little bit during spring break and they were painting and having a great time, so it was wonderful. And then because she would never mention this herself, but Erin Probus, our principal from Hornet Park, is a Locks of Love person. And you might notice a new hairdo.
Which is recognized by the school.
Which looks great. But Erin has actually donated her height in hair, plus one inch. So five feet, three inches of hair she's donated to Locks of Love. So I just, that's not something she would say and just one of the very neat things that our principals and staff do here all the time. And I just wanted to recognize her for that. Thank you. So that's it.
Okay. There aren't very many of us here tonight, so you guys are gonna have to take choice, say, you know, making the motions. So we need a motion to approve the minutes for February 12 regular meeting and the special session minutes for March 12 and March 18.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Rick?
I would second that.
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And claims? We need a motion to approve the claims as presented. Yes, presented. I'll make a motion to approve. Nancy?
I'll second.
Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Dr. Keely, business update?
I have been working diligently the last six weeks probably with our food service company called Chartwell. I brought that to you about a year ago as we did our RFP, request for proposal and all that. And I have no reason, we've done a survey and the feedback I've had overall, even in areas where I feel like we've had a couple of hiccups during the school year, they've been responsive and I've given them a couple more goals to work on for the next year. But the number one criteria that I was looking at when we were evaluating Chartwells is whether or not they financially, fiscally fulfilled their contract. And they did. And so I can't argue at all, they made more money than we made on our own. The comments from the general parent point of view, I've had a lot more positives than I've had negative. In food service, lunches every day, breakfasts every day, intercession food, after school now meals, it's very challenging. And so you're gonna always have a couple of hiccups. So I feel like we're on the positive and the responsive. And so I'll work with the principals in the next month to two months to work on their cafeterias. We're gonna upgrade Central Elementary's cafeteria. We're buying new equipment with the money that they generated during the year. So we're rolling those dollars right over for a positive. Because of those things, I just want to recommend that you consider approving the contract. We have to do this annually. We have kind of a regulation, the state board forces you to do an annual evaluation or decision on that. So that's the first item.
Do you have like a roundabout number as to how much we're saving using Chartwell versus what we were doing?
It's not, it's not dollars. Yeah, it's not dollars. Food service is very different. When you bring in dollars from your lunch programs, and I'm gonna talk about lunch money here in a minute, but when you bring in dollars like that, it has nothing to do with our school corporation budget per se. It's a food service account and so it's held over here. And so we buy commodities, food, and we generate the lunch with all of that. So if there's profit in there, it stays in there. And then any money that is, ends up in there, ends up going to a new oven or a new wheelie cart or kind of a third bay area here in the high school cafeteria. And so they use the money, any profit, to go right to the kids again. So it's not, it doesn't really kind of play into...
But do you feel we're benefiting from it more financially than we're able to do more?
Yeah, we had a 6% increase of dollars that we...
Oh, okay, there we go.
Yeah, we had a 6% increase of dollars on hand that I'm able to turn right around. Yeah, and I'm actually asked for approval of $32,000 expenditure on Mr. Butler's cafeteria because it was not as safe as it needed to be. So we're making two lines. And so it's kind of a different separate budgeting area, but it's going very positive. We have some areas where we can improve. The middle school cafeteria is work area for the workers. It's just too compact. And so we have to continue to work on some improvements there. But overall, I'm very pleased. I'm very pleased. And that doesn't say, you know, there's some things we could approve on, but I'm very pleased where we're at right now and I would highly recommend keeping Chartwell.
Tom, talk very quickly about indirect cost and how we benefit from that currently?
Sure. Right now, every year, and this has been going on ever since I've been business manager and before me, there's a formula through the federal government that's called indirect cost and it's a percentage that calculates the total dollars that are expended on personnel, total dollars on lunches, you know, 480,000 dollars. And then you take a percentage of that and we heat the area, we house the kitchen, we maintain, we wax the floors. And so we do a lot of other indirect things to help support the food service grouping, okay? And since we send our maintenance department over there and we have custodial cleaning, I mean, you can imagine how much that takes to clean the whole cafeteria every single day. We have that percentage and there's about $158,000 that we profit into the general fund on an annual basis. That's a lot of money. And that's that, those dollars that when you look at that program, you know, Chartwell's doesn't profit from that. You know, they, we house them and help them and then they're, you know, some of their employees are employed with us through the whole cooperative, you know, symbiotic relationship thing. And then we end up getting about $158,000. And we will end up receiving that in May, right? So we'll end up sending them a bill and receiving those dollars in there. So it's a really good cooperation and it's nice now to have a nutrition level. It's so professionally run that we didn't have all the expertise. And I knew that was kind of a flaw where we could get better. We were good. I mean, we were good. But a dietitian and just some of those federal regulations, our calorie count, they know carbs, they know exactly what the kids are eating every day. So it's kind of a neat process of, a neat changeover that we've had.
Not just that, it's the, I know this from my kids and from having friends that go to school, is the choices, or just the quality of choices of just growing.
And they're, actually, they're quite a bit healthier when you look at the calorie content and the kids like it automatically guarantee you fresh fruit, fresh vegetable every single day. And we weren't, we weren't able to do that. But now the purchasing power of all these, all these school corporations together through a national company, we're able to be one stop, just kind of like a Coke dealer. You know, we're just one stop along their trail. And so, yeah, the commodities, it's a neat, you know, it's a neat process. So it's been good. I've heard a lot of positive comments. Pizza's good, you know, I bet, so it's good.
Thank you. We'd like to make a motion to approve the contract, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract renewal of Chartwell.
Rick? Would you like to second, please? Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, we need to talk about lunch prices.
Because of the, because of a percentage of free and reduced lunches that we are reimbursed back from the federal government, which actually helps and helped us this year produce more dollars in that fund, there is a Indiana, State of Indiana regulation that the dollars that come in and income from the federal government on reimbursement need to equal, be equalized per lunch for the price that you pay for anybody who pays for lunch. And I did a survey, actually I asked Kelly Deal, our food service director, to look at all the area school corporations, Franklin Township, Warren Township, Perry Township, Decatur. And we are, we were underpriced and we haven't raised prices in five years?
Three years.
Four, three percent cut. It's been a while. Well, they did the, they did the mathematical calculation on our dollars for the annual expenditure from the last year. And by these state regulations, we have to increase our prices to just come up to where the federal reimbursement dollar is. And that equates to 10 cents. So it's still very reasonable. In the update, I gave you each one of the dollars. High school's $2.20 for lunch and that's a full lunch with the milk and everything. Middle school will be 220, South Grove 210, Central and Hornet Park 210. So our elementary grade levels will all be 210. And because we have a higher, bigger portions at the high school, 220. As I compared to all five districts around us, we're right in line with them. And some of them, you know, I won't name some of them, but some of them are 245, 265 at the high school level. So just $2.20, I still believe to be very reasonable. But I need to have that approval considered so that we remain in the guidelines of federal government, basically.
Can we put a Beach Grove Cafe sign on Emerson and point him down this way at lunch? Because I'd like to pay 220 for lunch.
Neon? 220's a good price.
Motion to approve the increase.
Rick, second. Who would like to make a second, please?
All second.
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. How about our technology common school loan?
Yeah, in the spring every year, we have the opportunity to get a common school technology loan. And this is a reoccurring loan that when we get it this year, we have one that was five years ago that dropped off because you can't finance them over five years. And so we have this reoccurring going on. So that one is the technology loan and it can only go up a certain number of dollars per student. And so we get about $285,000, $287,000. And they calculate that based on our student population, okay? The other part though, you want to approve that first and then I'll explain the other one because the other one's a much bigger deal than this.
For the construction one?
Yeah. It's the same process.
Okay.
But it's a lot more money. We don't have to spend the money for a long period of time, three years. And we're in a position right now that our taxes are not receiving enough revenue so that if we have a roof emergency, if we had an HVAC emergency, if we had a serious problem that would shut down a school, right now, we don't have cash balances because of our problem with the taxes. problem with the taxes and the tax caps that we've explained month after month after month to make me feel comfortable or Dr. Kaiser feel comfortable that we have kind of a cushion in case of an emergency. And so, the same, we qualify as a school because of our population and where we're at, being in a urban district, to get a common school construction loan. And it's different than the technology loan. But it's under the same State Board of Accounts and the Indiana Department of Education regulations, okay? They're doled out in the exact same way. And Dr. Kaiser and I would like to recommend us putting in an application. We have to show a need that we need the money. So, we've asked Performance Services to show that over the course of the next three years, we don't have enough money in capital projects fund, and we had explained that those were zeros. So, this is one of those unique solutions that we've identified where if we had an emergency, or if we want to replace a boiler, or if we were going to have heat problems, or something's outdated and dangerous, we don't, we wouldn't have to have an emergency and go ask for an emergency loan. Instead, we'd cover it here. And if in the do-have process that we're going to do in the next six weeks, things go very positive, we could get this loan and we could give it back. We could just receive it right back, or we could stop the process at any point.
But are you actually getting the loan, or are you just applying in case you need the loan?
Right now, we're just asking to apply for it because I need your permission to apply for both loans.
And we have until May 3rd to determine this. So, if we go to the do-have process and they let us restructure the one loan that we've talked about, we may not even apply for it.
Right.
Or we may go ahead and apply for it, and let's say, first year, we don't really need it. The money just sits in the, in the state treasury.
So, we don't make payments on it?
No.
Until you use, that's...
Unless you use it all.
So, it's just sitting there as a gift?
It's sort of.
I mean, you know what I'm saying.
It's very low interest, but from my standpoint, we got to cut a check, and I go to Brian, and I go, "We got this $30,000 problem. What are we going to do?" And he goes, "I don't know. What are you going to do?" I don't have, you know, it gives us, it gives us flexibility in spending power that if we have an emergency, and I'll tell you what, the roofs and things like that...
It's expensive.
It's huge. When we redid the middle school roof just, you know, a few years ago, five, four years ago, $480,000. That was huge. And it's much better now. So, but before we did that, we had trash cans standing in the hallway, and water was always being caught in trash cans. And we want to avoid some of those issues, and we don't have the flexibility in our capital projects plan that I continue to kind of mold and talk about.
I just wanted people watching that are seeing that you're not just taking out the loan to take out the loan in case. You're not going to take out the loan until you need it.
Absolutely.
It's kind of like a piggy bank. So, for example, South Grove, the HVAC in that building could stop working any time. It'd probably be $200,000 to $300,000 to replace it. So, we could go ahead and, you know, bid the project to it, and then, as the invoices come in, we submit them to the state, and they pay them. And then, so we only have to pay back what we used. So, it's like a piggy bank there. And at the end of the three years, if we don't use the money, nothing happens. Or if we use $50,000, it's kind of an emergency loan that we can apply for ahead of time and utilize it. Like you said, we'll, we'll know by May 3rd whether we want to move forward with it or not, but it's kind of a good safety net.
What kind of interest is on that note?
4%. 4% to 7%. The ones in recent times have been less than 4. Our technology loans, I think, Brian, have been 4. So, that's pretty good, you know, right now.
Anybody else have any other question? Somebody make a motion for approval to apply for the common school construction loan?
I'll make a motion to.
Tim? Who'd like to second, please?
I'll second.
Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, back to the technology one, right? Now, we're back to the technology loan. You just want us to approve it since you talked about it a little bit.
It's that reoccurring one that we do, and because of CPF, we have to have internet. We can't function as a school now that we have the tablets, and the way we, you know, school is evolving, we don't have the dollars freed up because transportation now takes up a lot of those technology dollars. And so, our technology account is this revolving five-year account where they drop off and it comes back on. So, I highly recommend it. I think we're probably going to need, unless something changes with tax caps and things, we're probably just going to be in this pattern. It's good to have a plan, but I wish it was a better plan, but this is our plan right now.
Anybody else have any questions about the technology? Who'd like to make a motion to apply for that?
I'll make a motion to apply for the technology.
I'll second.
Rick, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Can I, can I do the personnel real quick? Is that...
Yeah, did I skip right over it?
I don't know if I'm included.
I don't think it's on here.
It's a really short one, so it's awesome.
Okay.
So, it should have just said business and personnel instead of just...
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
I wanted to make sure that we brought this up because I do have five teachers listed on the personnel report, the PDF that went out. Connie Holler, Beach Grove High School, 32 years. Suzie Burton, Central Elementary, 40 years. Jeff O, Beach Grove Middle School, 39 years experience. Laura, Beach Grove Middle School, 29 years. And Diana Boss, Hornet Park Elementary, 34 years. Those five teachers, outstanding service, outstanding in the classroom, outstanding to show up tonight. I mean, it just shows you their dedication, and we're going to miss them. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that they were in the personnel report, and at the end of the year, we will have our, you know, we'll take an opportunity to acknowledge their years of service and ask the principals to, you know, say a couple of words. But on camera, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that was in there.
Tom, would you also talk about our high school staff member who's taking a new leadership position? Todd?
Yeah, he's not included because of the timing.
Well, we got the letter today. So, if you want to approve it today, you can.
Okay. The high school, Todd Saxter, we want to congratulate him. He has turned in his letter of resignation because he is taking the athletic director job at Franklin County, which is Brookville. It's out to the east over by Cincinnati, and that's his hometown. He is a hometown hero there, and to be named athletic director out there is a wonderful career step for him. So, we're really excited. I had not gotten the letter, so...
We just put it in the Dropbox, the staff's in it.
Okay, so it was in there in PDF. And so, we want to congratulate Todd. He knows all the sports and everything, and he'll do an outstanding job with that. So, we want to wish him well. He will finish out, you know, his regular contract, his school year and everything, but next fall, that's associate studies position and coaching thing and stuff.
Do you need us to approve all these personnel?
Yeah, I think it's two.
Yeah, if you have any questions.
Who'd make a motion to approve the personnel?
I'll make a motion.
Tim? Who would second, please?
Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and then, Paul, do you want to talk about the student code of conduct?
Yes, and we...
Did we miss something?
Yeah, we also have the calendar and softball.
Okay.
Calendar's real simple. Actually, Tammy even made this suggestion, and ironically, when I met with the teachers the next day, they said, "Can we build a snow day in and not have four days of President's Day?" And I said, "That's a great idea." So, we picked May 16th. And so, instead of having four days of President's Day next year, we'll have three, and then, we'll have a day in May on May 16th. If we don't use it as a snow makeup day, it'll be a day off. If we do, we'll make it up then. And that helps us not having to add it to the end of the year. So, it's the same calendar with the exception of that change. So, we asked you for approval on that, and then, we'll send an email out to parents to get that on the webpage so they know. I don't think that'll be a big impact. I don't know how many parents take that as a vacation, but if everybody got something scheduled, they could go ahead and do it and be fine. But same thing with our teachers. So, it's a minor change in our calendar for next year.
Okay. So, who'd make a motion to amend the calendar, please?
I'll make a motion to amend.
Rick, who'd like to second?
I'll second.
Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, softball fundraiser.
And I'm not sure what it is. I can't remember. Robin, you want to help me out on that?
Some trash bags and...
Oh, trash bags.
I've already seen it.
Yes.
Trash bags and candles and cookie dough and stuff.
My daughter hasn't brought it home yet, so I should know that.
Okay, who'd like to, please, the fundraiser?
I'll agree with the fundraiser.
Tim, second, please?
I'll second.
Tammy, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, we go to the student code.
Can I talk about, just to add those three things real quick?
Yes.
Okay, very quickly, a strategic plan to our community members that is on our webpage. Marilyn got that.
I'm glad he's not here. Melody.
Melody got that put up on the webpage today. And we have, the sky's falling here in the boardroom, part of our...
We need that lunch.
But, and that's on the webpage. We invite parents to look at that, and community members give us any feedback. The board has not approved that yet. We want to leave that on there until the May board meeting, and we'll send an email out to all our patrons, and we'll send it on Facebook and tweet it, or whatever Robin does with all that social stuff to let parents know that it's out there, but it's on the webpage now. One-to-one, we had a meeting with our provider of our tablets. We were not pleased with the stability of our tablets that we had bought for South Grove and the middle school. And so, they have replaced, I think, almost 100% of the ones that were not functioning at their cost. They also, I told them we owed them $90,000. We weren't going to pay them, and they agreed to that because of all the blood, sweat, and tears that we've had over the last year with the tablets. And they've also took, agreed to replace any tablet for the next three years that is not student damage. And you can tell if a kid really damages it, but if it's through wear and tear, they're actually going to replace that or fix it at no cost to us. In addition, next year, they're going to take every tablet that we currently own, and they're creating a new outer box cover for it, which is much sturdier. The tablets itself are working well, but the materials that they were made with, there's bending and some issues. They're going to fix those for free, and they're going to put a brand-new outer box tablet on every single tablet that we have at no cost to us, plus the original tablets which are in that room. They're going to trade those in at full value and give us 360 new tablets in its place for K3. So, we feel like they've really worked with us on that. We're one of the few schools that they're doing every grade level in some capacity. So, we feel very pleased with what CIA has come to the table to help us with that. And three years from now, I'm sure there'll be a device we can buy that's less expensive and even more durable. But the bottom line, they're going to get, they're going to warrant you their product for the next three years, which we feel very pleased about that. And especially since they're really crediting us for $90,000 that we still owe them and everything else. And the last thing is that we are going to actively pursue corporate sponsorships. As Dr. Keely has highlighted many times, because of property tax caps and increased assessed valuation, we really have no money in CPF. So, we're in the process of going out, talking to vendors. The athletic department has listed five people they're going to go to. I have some others. And we're going to really go out there and beat the bushes and try to get corporate sponsorships. One for a digital sign at the pit, another one for a digital sign leading into the high school. You know, we don't have the money to buy those. Those are pretty expensive. So, that's going to be our starting point in some corporate sponsorships, so we have some ideas on that. So, that's kind of what we're doing in our spare time.
We might as well just move on to student code of conduct since we've said it three times.
Dr. Phil Wagner, who's, he's worked last week during spring break, so he's on vacation this week. He's walking the streets of Memphis with his wife, trying to find Elvis Presley. And so, he normally talks about, but it's in a nutshell, annual, we have to approve our code of conduct. Principals, I don't think there were any major changes, so it's really more of an annual blessing to approve the code of conduct so we can give credit and online to our parents.
Somebody make a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Tim? Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's see. Do you want to talk about upcoming work session dates?
Yeah, just that, we'll be emailing you some dates. I think we sent some out, but we're sent out again about trying to have some upcoming work sessions we've been talking about. We have one coming up two weeks from tonight, and so, between now and then, we'll try to get some other dates to meet through the month to really talk about the district evaluation process and also talk about things we want to discuss moving forward. Hopefully, it's a follow-up to the work session we had with Mike Adamson from the School Board Association. Hopefully, you found that beneficial and just to kind of do some planning moving in and really update some budget and staffing patterns and moving forward. So, we'll get those dates due.
Any comments from the board?
I have some. I don't know what else does. Congratulations to all the students of the month. Also, to piggyback off of what Dr. Hammack said, on June 7th, 8th, and 9th, the special events will be held at Indiana State University. If you'd like to volunteer, you can go to surveymake.com, fill out their survey, and that'll get you pointed in the right direction. And I would also like to comment, I don't know if people realize just how much Randy Clevenger does, not just during the school day, but also the extracurricular activities that he does. And one of them is Mr. Warner's Civil War program, which is awesome if you're a Civil War buff of any type. I was able to go and check that out, and that was really neat. And I wanted to thank Mr. Clevenger for all of his time to do that, and good luck to all the spring sports. That's it.
I had the privilege last night of being on the field when the park board, the mayor named the baseball diamond at Serra Bolton Park after Dick Timlin. And as Buddy made the comment, you know, that the mayor of Beach Grove and the superintendent of Beach Grove both played for Dick Timlin, the mayor 40 years ago, and me 30-something years old. And it was with him and Jim Hensley, and the other, our other coach, new coach, who's probably about 80 now, was there last night. And we were talking about all the hair that I had on my head back in the '70s, even the facial hair. And he never put two and two together because of Paul Kaiser now and how I look back in those days. But it was kind of neat just to be back on the field last night, and to have a really nice sign up for Dick Timlin. And what a wonderful experience as a young 17, 18-year-old to be able to have the guidance of both Dick Timlin and, you know, Jim Hensley. It was truly two of the most enjoyable summers of my life playing baseball down there. And I was an average baseball player, but I had a lot of fun. And we got to travel the state of Indiana from Rinsalier to Seymour and every place. And we had a game on Tuesday night, Thursday night, a game on Friday, doubleheader on Saturday, doubleheader on Sunday, all summer long. And it was truly, plus I played on another travel baseball team and other things. But I truly remember those days so fondly and pulling up and turning my radio and listening to the Bee Gees and other '70s people. But it was just fun to be there last night, to be a very small part of what the mayor has recognized Dick for his hard work and dedication. I think Dick coached maybe 40, 45 years, and his wife was recognized too for her commitment to be on the second row of the bleachers for every game. But it was, it was a lot of fun last night. And also, add that our new softball diamond, we finished some touches on it with a new warning track, new batting cage, and some other things. So, baseball, softball, all the sports are going on right now. So, I encourage you to support our kids. It should be Play Rock Colley tomorrow night, the varsity, Play Rock Colley and the JV here on our field, so...
Well, how appropriate that you were listening to the Bee Gees and how you work for Bee Gees.
Yes, that's correct. But I appreciate, I just appreciate everything and what our mayor has done to just spruce up the city a lot of different ways, I think has been really neat. And I know there's a lot of headaches going on with the road project downtown, but when that is done, it's going to really make a difference for Beach Grove. I know it's, it's going to be done in October, but get out and visit your park. There's been a lot of improvements down at Serra Bolton Park and a lot more. Get out and really enjoy the great community activities, so...
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
I'll second.
Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Will you adjourn? We need a adjourn?
I do.